This conference will now be recorded.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams? Malat? Shriver?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have requests or comments from the public. If you have anyone getting public comments tonight, please state your name and address. We'll keep comments under three minutes. Oh, before public comments? Oh.
Kind of in part of it. Chuck Stites, Edwardsville, Kansas. And I am the District Seven County Commissioner. And first off, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your guys' time on your agenda so that we can discuss a few things that I've been working on and things that have happened over my past six months as the newly-elected county commissioner. My plan is to attend city councils periodically in Bonner Springs and Edwardsville throughout the year, giving these types of updates. I'm currently working on putting together a town hall also that for this fall that would be open to Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and the portion of Kansas City, Kansas that I represent also. As your guys, as your commissioner, and I like to say that because you guys were the ones that elected me, as your commissioner, I've been working on several items that affect District Seven. And the first one, I think that we'll talk about is taxes. Everybody brought up taxes when I was running. I think it's very important that, and I think that you guys have done a great job at identifying that at the city mill reduction, and I know that five out of my six years on the city council, that we reduced the city mill levy for Edwardsville. Now, what I think is interesting is now that I'm at the county or working on the county side, we need to really work on this county budget or the mill levy reduction. And that's something that we are currently in negotiations and budget discussions and workshop that's going on right now. So I do recognize that tax relief on the county side needs to be addressed. Another thing that we have talked about is the ARPA versus the CARES Act money. You guys probably know how I feel about the CARES Act and how I feel like we were, we as Edwardsville was underrepresented when that went out and that we, in my opinion, got shorted some dollars that were out there. We didn't have proper present representation, sorry. And this time, that's not, that's not the case. We're working very hard to make sure that the ARPA dollars, matter of fact, I was on the phone just this afternoon talking with staff at the UG. And this coming, you guys might want to make sure to put this on your calendars, this coming Thursday at 5:00, there is a budget presentation that is going to address the, when they did the, I think it was called DOT Talks, went around the city, the concerns of all that included Western YN County. So there's going to be some things that are going to be presented, is what I'm being told, on Thursday at the 5:00 meeting that is going to, I hear going to be good items for Western YN County, Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, that we spoke up and there's some changes on the horizon. The 501(c)(3) dollars that are available in the ARPA funding, that ends on, I was talking to Mike earlier, that on June 24th, all applications need to be in to receive grant dollars for that 501(c)(3) money. And everyone, every, everyone, every 501(c)(3) that works within YN County, not Kansas, just Kansas City, Kansas, is eligible. So we need to make sure that our 501(c)(3)'s are notified, they know that to get their application in, even if it's not completed accurately, they need to get it in before the 24th, the deadline. That way, we can, we can get them adjusted and fixed if need be. The pilot, the pilot is an ongoing, and I know that your council here and Mike and the mayor, that was one of the items that I brought up right off the bat, the BPU pilot. And why we're paying it, why Edwardsville's paying it, why is Kansas City, or Bonner Springs paying it, and we are, we're still working on that right now. And I hope that we're going to have some resolution here shortly on the BPU pilot. As you guys are all aware, safe and welcoming was an issue that was brought up right off the bat after the election. And what that, the municipal ID, if you guys watched, and I know that Mike did because we talked about it just a little bit ago, last Thursday, the community ID was brought back before the full commission. And that ID stated that it was going to be, the heading was that it was a YN County Community ID. Well, I didn't agree because YN County includes Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. And so I got that changed that night, last Thursday night, that it's not called a YN County Community ID. They think now it was a Kansas City, Kansas Community ID, because that's who wanted it. And Bonner Springs and Edwardsville was not in that process. And so that got changed, and that was, I felt like was a, was a good, good win. Transit, the micro bus or micro transit that you guys may have already heard about.
One of the things that folks that live in the high-rise expressed to me that some of them do not have access to be able to take them to the Legends, or just to get out, to go for an afternoon getaway. They're trapped. They have no car, maybe they have no family. Well, that really hit home, and I didn't, it bothered. One of the things, whenever this micro transit was up and running or got kicked off the ground, that I said that I wanted to see, they were like, well, it's going to, you can dial it up, it's going to be like an Uber, you can get that. And I said, no. I said, what I want, I want a dedicated stop on a day of a week, right? That's for you guys or the high-rise, somebody to work out those details. But I want it to be that every Tuesday, that every Tuesday at 11:00, that bus will come there. You don't have to dial it up and then wait for it. There will be a bus that comes there on Tuesday at 11:00, and you'll be able to go to the Legends and go for a couple hours, knowing that that bus is going to return back if you want to talk to a customer. And that folks can count on that, because I think that makes it easier, that they can put it on their calendars, say that Tuesday at 11:00, we can go get a ride to the Legends. So hopefully that's something that gets off. I think they're talking about late '22 and maybe it's early '23. I think that is about all that I have, except for the last thing I want to bring up. I got this.
Okay. So you guys may have got this in the mail today. Not sure if everybody's checked their mailbox or not, but it's YN County Election Office. And if you look at it, one of the things that we had talked about on services at the county level, and lack thereof in Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, is a location for Western YN County, Bonner Springs and Edwardsville to go vote early. Well, if you look right here, there's four locations. YN County Election Office, that's a good distance away. The Joe Mio Argentine Community Center, that's a good distance away. Eisenhower Rec Center, still a pretty good distance away. And the Kane Community Center up on 122nd Street, pretty good distance away. This is the kind of thing that I'm talking about, that we have to stay focused on and fix, because we've been neglected for too long, District Seven. And we're going to get a polling location eventually, and maybe it's here in Edwardsville or it's in Bonner, but somewhere that we can vote early and have it and not have to travel and take a sack lunch to get there. So that, then that just came today, so that's why I brought that up. For everybody that may have questions for me, I love questions, I try to respond back to my constituents as quickly as I can. My email, if you all want to write it down, if you don't, you may have my phone number, you can call me. It is cestites, S-T-I-T-E-S, at yco kck.org. And I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out.
I'd really like to appreciate, or present my appreciation for your active communication. I do appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
I second that. I'm sorry, is that a secure email?
Is that a, is that a secure email? I hope so.
I'm being serious.
I think that that has been rectified and that you are safe. If not, like I said, you can call me, text me if you're not comfortable with that email. But no, I think that, I think you're safe.
Thank you.
But thanks again.
Okay, now we're going to start our public comments time. If you have any public comments, please state your name and address. We'll comment to three minutes. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the commission. My name's Bill Hutton. I have lived in the 33rd District of the House of Representatives for 22 years, and I am running for State Representative. The reason I'm here tonight is because the 33rd District covers all of Edwardsville, all of Bonner Springs, a part of what I call Lower Piper and part of Turner. And I just wanted to go ahead and introduce myself. I've appeared before this planning commission before, years ago. I've appeared before your municipal court. I serve as the judge in Bonner Springs. So part of one of my problems is Bonner Springs and you all have city council meetings on the same night. So I will try to make as many meetings as I can between now and the November election. And again, I won't make myself a stranger if I'm elected, but just want to introduce myself. Thank you very much. And I'll give you my home address. It's 13939 parallel Kansas City, Kansas, 66007. I am literally the last house in YN County on the west and on the north.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. All right, next item on the agenda is item three, consider the following items related to Wood End Road Tax Increase and Finance District.
Mayor, members of the council, Scott's going to cover this item, but I just know that we do have three separate items, which is one, that's a public hearing, two, to support the following public hearing, and three, to adopt a resolution. So I think Scott probably will.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, Scott Anderson, counsel to the city. The first item we have regarding the Wood End Road TIF redevelopment district is a public hearing for Project Plan 2A. This is the first project plan the city has considered within the Wood End Road TIF district. Project Plan 2A consists of the redevelopment of approximately three acres located at 2781 South 93rd Street. Formerly, this was a portion of 9301 Wood End. And the project plan has both a private component and a public component. The private component is the construction of an approximately 6,000 square foot building, commercial building, and improvements to 93rd Street, while the public component consists of improvements to the remainder of 93rd Street and also construction of a lift station and a force main. As part of the project plan, the city prepared a feasibility study. The feasibility study shows that there'll be approximately $486,000 in TIF-eligible, in TIF reimbursement funds. Obviously, that's our best guess as of today, the amount of money the TIF plan will generate over the next 20 years. There are approximately 700,000 of TIF-eligible costs that can be reimbursed under the project plan that have been identified. Approximately 150,000 of those costs would go to the city to reimburse the city for its TIF-eligible expenses on 93rd Street and the lift station and force main. And the remaining 550,000 would go to reimburse the developer for their TIF-eligible expenses. We've been before the council a number of times with this project plan, so I think we're generally pretty familiar with it. It would run for 20 years, and it would start tonight if the ordinance is approved. My recommendation at this time is that you open a public hearing and take any public comments on the TIF plan unless you have questions for me at this time.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we open a public hearing regarding redevelopment Project Plan 2A.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat? Shriver?
Yes.
Hey, if anyone here that would like to speak about a redevelopment, that would be the same.
So moved?
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat? Shriver?
Yes.
Mayor, council members, the next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number 1055, approving Project Plan 2A. The city's taken all the necessary steps to create a TIF project plan, including preparation of the plan, the feasibility study, and notifying the public and holding the public hearing. The final step is the approval of the ordinance. The ordinance establishes Project Plan 2A as a project within the Wood End Road TIF district. The project plan will run for a period of 20 years, commencing upon approval of the ordinance. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Once the costs have been reviewed from the city and developer, does the TIF run out at that point, or does it continue critical?
No, that is correct. Once all TIF-eligible costs have been reimbursed, if we make it to that point, then the TIF project plan does cease, and all revenues are then dispersed like all other property taxes.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 1055, an ordinance approving and adopting redevelopment Project Plan 2A within the Wood End Road TIF redevelopment district.
Second? Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat? Shriver?
Yes.
Mayor, council members, the final item on Project Plan 2A is approval, consideration of Resolution 2022-09, approving the execution and delivery of a disposition and development agreement. Pursuant to the ordinance that was just approved, Project Plan 2A will commence and the revenues will be captured by the city in what's known as a special allocation fund per state statute. What the disposition and development agreement before you tonight does is it controls how that money is spent from the special allocation fund. It contains a number of covenants of the developer. The developer will agree to, you know, to build the project according to the specs required. The developer also agrees to submit costs, prove up invoices, things of that nature, all so that we can basically check their TIF-eligible expenses. The other thing it does, which I want to point out, is the developer also agrees to comply with the project schedule and the civic obligation requirements. Both of these requirements were contained in the original development agreement that council approved for this project probably six months ago or so. Those covenants are carried through to this disposition and development agreement, which remains in place so long as there are any TIF revenues to disperse, presumably for the entire 20-year period. The, under the DDA, TIF revenues are split between the city and the developer, so each year, the city gets half the revenues, the developer gets half the revenues until such time that both parties have been reimbursed for their costs. Because the city's costs are less than developers, it's presumed that the city will be reimbursed first, at which point 100% of the reimbursement would go to the developer until such time that the developer's reimbursed. Happy to take any questions on the development agreement that you may have.
Just one comment is that the, our document that we have does not have Resolution 2022-09 on the top of it. At least, I don't see it. Okay, there it is at the back, okay. Okay. Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2022-09, resolution approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a disposition and development agreement, Project Plan 2A, Wood End Road, TIF redevelopment district.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat? Shriver?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is really in keeping with the items we just approved. Part of the development agreement basically says at the point that the developer has this plan in place, and they begin, they retain their engineers to move forward, but they're part of the project. We would go out and engage our engineers to do the work of the sewer system, which again, the sewer system basically consists of a relatively small lift station that will serve all of the property, so not just this piece, but pretty much everything in the TIF district, and then a force main that ties into the existing force main on Wood End Road. It's our recommendation that we would simply utilize a task order with BHC, I say BHC Roads, I got to remember, they don't use roads anymore, just BHC Engineering, who serves as our city engineer for this particular project. You see the task order attached. It is a not-to-exceed fee of $32,500. When we put together the estimate of cost as it related to the city's portion of the TIF, this is pretty much right on the mark of where we thought those dollars would be, approximately $32,000 for the engineering. Happy to answer any questions. Once the, if the task order's approved, you see the work, they'll begin doing the engineering portion for the sewer. Obviously, that will tie into the other work that's being done out there with the road, et cetera, but our responsibility is simply for the sewer. Happy to answer questions.
What is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
The engineering will probably take about 60 days. Construction, probably the longest piece of the construction is probably, it will be what's known as a Smith &amp; Loveless package plant or duplex type of lift station, similar to the ones we have. We basically have two of them that are be almost identical along K-32 behind the Conoco Station and the one out by Plaza West. So those are pre-made systems, they sit on top of a large manhole, basically. It's just time. I mean, the engineering part of it is relatively quick, the force main portions, it'll probably take longer to get the materials in than it will to take to construct it. But we're anticipating about two months for engineering and about four months, you know, probably about 30 days for bidding, because it will be bid out, and then probably four months for construction. So we're six to nine months from now before it would be operational, which ties in with their project. So they've already obtained a building permit for the building. But just like us, there's a very long lead time, so they probably won't receive the physical building, because it's mainly a metal structure, until probably early of 2023. So they want to get all the stuff done, the road built, their parking lots done, the pad built, everything in place, because once the building arrives, again, it's probably a 60-day construction time. And they have a tenant that's already agreed to take the space, so probably more than you wanted, sorry. Yeah. So I will say that CIMI III, which as we all know is Mike Kincaid, is the managing partner owner, he's already, you know, their plating is completed, their engineering plans have all been submitted, and I believe we've approved all the road plans, their grading plans, building permit, I think is in final review. So they've moved forward with all the steps necessary to put this project, you know, in the ground and have a building built.
So the construction inspection is not included. What does that typically run?
This is such a small project, I wouldn't expect more than $5,000. We very well, just depending, you know, may do it ourselves. So KDHE requires when you do a sewer project that anytime you're putting sewer line in the ground, you have onsite inspection. Again, it probably won't take very long to put the sewer in the ground, and that's the part they're mostly concerned with. But I would estimate no more than 5,000, probably much less than that.
Thank you.
Second? Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat? Shriver?
Yes.
Well, this is one of those projects that my good friend Dusty left before he, before he left. As you know, we had quite a bit of discussions during the budget about continuing our full depth pavement repairs and subsequently looking at next, you know, 2022 seal or chip seal programs. The first part of that is the full depth repairs. seal or chip seal programs. The first part of that is the full-depth repairs. I will say I made somewhat of an error in the memo. This really goes from a hundred and fourth street to ninety-fourth street, so it doesn't include that section. I said a hundred and second, I just read it a little wrong. You can see, and this is just kind of a strip map, so it starts at a hundred and fourth, moves to the east. There are some areas we will not touch, such as some of the intersections that were paved, redone a few years ago. The pavement's in good condition, no reason to change that. We have a couple of water crossings that kind of get held back potentially if we need to replace the, the storm sewer underneath it. We don't want to fix the pavement and then tear it out and start over. There is one small section on a hundred and second street, which is basically from a hundred, from K thirty-two north to Steel Road, which is the entrance into, I never remember the name of the, that subdivision there, Rock Ridge. There's been a little bit of failure right there, and so we were going to pick that up, and that's still our plan. If necessary, if we need to trim the budget, that's, that would probably be the area we would trim it at. But I, I think we have sufficient funding for this. It will come out of both special sales tax and special highway fund. After some discussions with bond council, we would not use our twenty nineteen bonds that were set aside for streets and stormwater, because this portion of the road, Schwartz was not listed as a project on there. You know, we could go through the project amendment process, we've done that in the past. But right now, we think that because of some extra money that's coming to special sales tax and, and the highway fund, we don't think that'll be necessary to do that. We will be able to use it, I believe, for what we're planning for a chip seal project, because it's within the parameters of the language. So when we issue bonds, we say how they're going to be used. We generally have to follow those, those bases. We can't issue bonds for one thing and then go use it for something else. We did have four bidders, which I think is very good, especially in this market, including McInnany Construction, which was the low bidder last year for the full-depth repairs. I, I think we were pleased with the work that they did. They were pretty timely in the work that they did. We didn't have any problems. Barclay Asphalt, which is not a company that we had worked with before, it wasn't one I was aware of, I think they're out of Missouri. And then, of course, Amino Brother and Harbor Construction, those are two relatively local bidders. I think you see all the bids came in pretty, pretty close. Really, the biggest difference was asphalt cost between McInnany and, and the others. But they're, you know, they're, they're true to the price. You have the engineer's estimate, certainly it was well below the engineer's estimate. So based on that, we would recommend moving forward with the full-depth repairs for twenty twenty-two, with the low bidder being McInnany in the amount of three forty-three, six, six, seven point two five. I do note in there, and I don't think it's any surprise, that prices, because asphalt, you know, really the biggest changes in the asphalt, most of that, or parts of the work are negligible amounts of different, but obviously asphalt is dependent on oil pricing, and obviously oil pricing is up. But their bid was, I think, about twenty-eight percent higher. If you just use the same quantity this year for last year and just took the pricing, the others were somewhere between forty-seven and almost fifty percent different. So again, we would recommend McInnany's done work here on a number of different projects. Right, the Schwartz, BPU is doing that in order, because that was going to be a conflict area. And that's part of the reason we didn't continue down, I believe, ninety-eighth street. We had a meeting with BPU, and they have several places where they want to replace water lines. But we, if we went and tried to do full-depth repair, we were going to get into the water lines just because of the crossings and the shallowness and things, and so we diverted over to doing Schwartz East-West versus a North-South road. But they're moving their water lines. Once they finish that part, their water lines should be out of the way of any work that we're doing. They're about four foot off the edge of pavement, which, you know, generally, we won't be changing with the road. We'll, we'll, we'll pick up a little bit. We try to keep a minimum width of twenty feet through this process. Obviously, if we were reconstructing this road fully, we would do more width, but we'd have to acquire more right-of-way. So I think their water line technically is on the north side of the road right now, it's right on the edge or under it. But they're building it on the south, you're correct, but the, the line is in the pavement section on the north side, and they're moving to the south side. So they'll be out of the way. They'll probably cap it and leave it in place unless it's, unless it's within the depth of our paving, and then they'll cut it out, remove it. But they'll, they'll do a cap on that one. Typically, that's what they do. I, I'm speaking for BPU, but likely, they'll leave that line in place, but they'll disconnect it, and they'll disconnect any services that are attached to it. It's had multiple leaks, by multiples, I mean, you know, ten, twenty leaks in that section that they're replacing. Yes, me.
The hierarchy of roads. I've been getting the agenda, I've driven that section of Schwartz three times intentionally, just to feel every block in the road.
Right.
And I've also driven some other streets, and it just seems like there are other streets that are in higher need of immediate repair. If, if we think of like Kansas Avenue and some of those, and I just wouldn't know if it would be worth the council's time if, if they haven't had a chance to drive that section of road, because the amount of money, while it is coming into engineer cost, is a significant amount. We can fix a lot of roads for three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, just to make sure that's the street that's the highest paid for.
Well, and I think when we look at priorities on streets, obviously, we go back to what we did years ago, you know, pavement conditions. We also look, is a street going to be replaced in the sense of a reconstruction, and the mayor and I talked about, you know, Richland seems to be, I mean, obviously, it's a road in repair. I mean, we, we could all find several, I'm sure, but really think that the plan was that for Richland, we would look at that maybe as a full design, that it, it probably won't get funded through STP or something, it'll be a locally funded project. But to reconstruct that road, we have right-of-way in there. We, some of this is driven by utilities, right? If there's utility conflicts, which ones are the least conflicts? Or if there's one like BPU where they have a lot of water line breaks, they want to get the water line fixed before we come in there and do the roadway. You know, Kansas Avenue certainly is, you know, is, is a candidate. We've done some work on that road. Its biggest problem is really on the far west side of it. It narrows up so much that there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done to widen that road, get rid of trees, there's utility conflicts, gas line conflicts. That's why we, we didn't focus on that section of Kansas Avenue. Yeah, no, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. Right. Yeah.
But we have roads where people are literally scraping their cars, and I just wonder if that, if the council would consider putting, putting that maybe ahead on the timeline.
Right.
Which, which, I mean, is, is on the list.
Right. We had it on that six-year rotation schedule, right? That, that, again, Dusty put that together, six years. So we're trying to spend about the same amount of money every year, be consistent somewhat in our, in how many roads we do and how much.
Absolutely, and that's why we would suggest taking a road project off.
Right.
But just the timeline and, and which ones get fixed.
Right.
And, and I don't know if the council has had, I mean, this section of Schwartz? And then, if you wanted to share any thoughts on that section of Schwartz compared to, you know, if you feel like.
Mike, do we have a roadmap of kind of what, what the plan is for the road repairs on, on which ones are going to get done and what year?
Yeah, a, and I'm sorry, I don't have it this evening, but yes, that's, that's what Dusty had put together, you know, kind of a six-year plan where we touch every road in the city. So the, the, you know, some roads, again, once they're repaired like this, they're going, you know, their future is going to be a seal, some type of a seal coat product, right? Maybe not the one we used the past year, but some type of preservation project. So we're trying to get a, about a twenty-four-year lifespan out of a pavement overlay or, or. This is a somewhat of a reconstruction when you're going down and taking it out and building it back. So yeah, that's, and, and that's where Schwartz came in on that, on that plan. We switched a year between this and I, again, I believe it was I'm going to say the south side of a hundred and second, we have some storm we need to do, and there was water line conflicts, is, which is really why we switched the two years. Kansas Avenue, the, the part that we're talking about, I mean, it's, it's in poor shape. I mean, right, it's one of our lowest-rated roads on our road rating. The challenge we have, again, at the far west side, as you go into the Hollis Center, is, is really gas line relocations, taking out trees, widening some of the right-of-way. I mean, it, it's not just replace the pavement, because there's only, there're probably only about twelve feet of width in the pavement down there. I mean, right, it's very narrow down there, and it, it totally needs to be redone. That's one, I don't know, that's a rebuild, but it's certainly more than just, I mean, we can put asphalt on it, but you'd come back in two or three years and be back pretty much in the same condition. It's, it's, it's a full-depth slash reconstruction, whether you need curbs or not, but they're very shallow gas lines, we can't, they're, you know, the slopes are high. I mean, there needs some work to be done before that, and that was kind of the track we were on, was to try to do that work and then put it in the cycle for, for over that particular section. Now, others, you know, we did some work on, again, a hundred tenth street south of that, right? So that section, we did some full repairs, and those seem to have done well. The rest of the road's in pretty solid shape. It probably is a good candidate for a chip seal. You know, you don't have high, the Hollis Center has pretty high volumes on weekends, right? I, I don't, I don't know during the week it's that high, but certainly on weekends during the summer months, you know, it gets a lot of traffic. So it probably needs more attention than, say, a hundred tenth street south. I mean, I, I realize everybody, their road is important, and, and so every time I say something, I get, I get in trouble for saying that road's not as important. But, you know, it has a lower volume, right? I mean, there's not hundreds of thousands of cars going down the road. A Schwartz obviously has more traffic on it than does those two roads, generally speaking.
Mentioned, sorry, the section between ninety-fourth and ninety-eighth on Schwartz
Yeah.
Did seem like it needed the most, and, and if I remember on the map, on the city map, that was in red. Like, the Kansas Avenue was on red, but the rest of Schwartz, I think, was in a different color on our, on our, I forget what the acronym was, but on that map originally, and so I thought we might even be able to, in, in, you guys can give me some feedback, but tailor that a little bit to where maybe we do ninety-fourth to ninety-eighth, but then can use some of this three hundred and thirty thousand
Right.
To repair some other streets in our city that are worse off.
Well, and just as you see on this map, and I'm going to step up here if I may.
But you would chip and seal that though, wouldn't you, with that whole project?
Yeah, then in the future, that's, that's exactly right, and then, then on the next cycle, right?
Chip and seal.
Right.
But this project doesn't include the chip and seal of the entire section?
It does not, no. Clearly, we'll come behind that next cycle. Get the, get the major places prepared in this process, then get everything on chip and seal. And of course, if we have a major project like a ninety-eighth street, we get grant funded for it, right? Grant funding could be possible for the Kansas Avenue too, couldn't it? It is a, it is an eligible, Kansas Avenue is eligible under our, under this. I don't know if that portion is under the, under our road. I mean, it's eligible for bonding, so, so there's two different things. We have, we can issue bonds on a whole lot of roads that we consider collectors or, or between collectors, so generally not residential streets without a vote. When you get into the federal, it has to be a minor collector or higher, and I don't believe that section is classified on the, on that system as a minor collector. One point, it was intended, right, Kansas Avenue was going to go all the way from K seven to four thirty-five, but that got removed years ago.
I feel, I, we've had the engineering costs way off before, though. I feel like our engineering costs, our estimates are generally. Are they locked in at that?
This is a set bid, yes. There's no, this doesn't have an oil adjustment in it.
So if we tabled this for two weeks to give the council the opportunity to, to take their time and drive that section of road, we can come back in two weeks and move forward or, or make a plan from there?
Yes. I mean, I mean, they have to hold the bids, I think, for sixty days. I'd have to go forty-five, I think it's forty-five days, right? From the time we opened, and we opened them last Wednesday, Thursday, yeah, last Thursday.
If, if y'all would like the opportunity. I just felt like that was a lot of, a lot of money, and just to make sure we're putting it in the right.
When, when did we get this bid? I mean, has it been a week or two already?
Last, this past Thursday, we received the bids for this, and then we have bid openings, I think, this week for the chip seal program. Okay. But they're really two different things. So, so the, the chip seal program for, for this cycle is focused on River View. Because if you remember, when we were doing the hundred and tenth street, you know, we call it the River View Crossroads. We said, let's not touch that, it's going to be closed, leave it, and, and do the other, and then come back. And so by doing River View as, as, you know, that's, that road's in good condition, right? Could it be wider, et cetera? Yes. But it's solid road. We fixed the storm issue, which we wanted to get that done down there. And basically, between the River View Crossroad project and then what would be, what is the ninety-eighth street project, right, at the other end, we'll fill that gap and pretty much have that whole, kind of that whole section set for, you know, the next six to twelve years before we need to touch them again. This is, is the plan. There'll be crack seal, things of that, but minor, right? So.
So, so Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but so this is, even though we haven't, or I haven't seen the projected map of
Right.
The plan of these roads, but Dusty deemed this one next with his years of experience and, and driving the road, looking at it, and working with these guys, these contractors to get these bids. But this was deemed next, correct, by?
That is correct, yes.
By him and you?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and again, utilities was a big issue in this one.
Right.
And because BPU was, BPU could get to the Schwartz Road water line and get it fixed and out of our way.
Right.
Right? And, and they moved, quite honestly, fairly quickly to do that, right? I mean, it wasn't, it was something they needed to get done, they knew to get done. They were looking at their priorities as well, and we're telling them, these are our priorities. And, and they said, hey, we'll, we'll get this water line out of the way, because we need to, because we have a lot of water leaks, right? And that's not good for the water, not good for anybody to have broken water lines. That, you know, so can you wait two weeks, or can you move forward? You know, I guess the op, you know, I, I, I mean, we put the bid out for this particular project. So if we change the scope of the project, will they honor the unit pricing? I don't know, because I haven't had that discussion with them. This is, this is what we put out for bid, was this sec, this section of road.
Yeah, we, we don't want to do that. We don't want to get another bid, I don't think.
Right.
Price of oil and fuel goes up every day.
Right.
So this seems like, uh, like Garrett said, it looks like a pretty good.
Now, would they, would they hold that, I mean, as a, so if we said, hey, would you come back and take a look at Kansas Avenue doing the same method, would you hold these prices as a change order to do additional work? That, that's a possibility too. Again, haven't had that discussion with them. We did talk about potentially uh, cutting back this section of, of 102nd and K32. So, you know, could it, could it be, hey, if we're gonna take it off of this project, can we add it over here to this one? That's a possibility as, as well. I just haven't had those discussions.
Two weeks, that was, that was my question or thought is the council would have a chance to drive this personally.
Right.
Because there are some sections of Swartz, and, and I, I'm familiar with all the places Xed out. I've, I've become very familiar over the last few days with Swartz. Um, there are places that are just not that bad and there are places that are worse. And so it might be worth before, while the prices aren't gonna change in two weeks, this bid's still good and we can come back and take it in two weeks. Then making sure that we, um, are informed as well as possible before spending nearly half a million dollars on a project of taxpayer dollars.
One of the things we talked about with Richland and with Kansas is they are completely remakes. But if you put $300,000 into Richland, you wouldn't get whole, all of Richland done. And if you put it into Kansas, you wouldn't get much of Kansas done. And, you know, it's more like a 500, 600, 700,000 dollar project to do it right. Um, that's one of my concerns with it is, uh, Richland, it stinks and Kansas stinks. But if we can, if we can throw some asphalt in some of the big poles, so you don't have to turn your lights on when you're going through them, that would be really good. But, um, I think we accomplish a lot more in with this, because we have a longer run of prob, of road that gets taken care of. And, and it, it just concerns me that it wouldn't go very far on the needs of the other roads.
I, I agree for Richland, that's a really long stretch. Kansas Avenue, it didn't seem, and I, maybe I'm, I'm not thinking of the length as, as well, but I didn't think it was quite that long, that, that amount of money could, do you think that money could potentially do a full depth on all of Kansas Avenue or is that way off, Mike?
This, the full 343, could it do full depth of Kansas Avenue? Probably it's not as long, but again, I think our biggest issue there is, excuse me, our biggest issue there is, it, it will take a, a fair amount, right? I mean, we have not done any, that, it's gonna need engineering, right? I mean, we got utilities in the way, right of way acquisitions, those types of things that I think will be necessary. Again, because the road's so narrow and we got a slope, and we know we have a gas line, we know we have power and gas line conflicts. And then Richland, really, I think our focus is, one, that because it's hilly, right? So you wanna try to get rid of those. But two, we have two, you have Betts Creek that crosses there, structure that I think needs replacing or widened, right, to get the road. And there's a second one in between there, and both of those are pretty bad paved areas as well. But I think the focus would be on, and, and there, I, I think we can use our funding out of the bond for the stormwater, right? Because that's what we did it for, was to look at stormwater improvements. Stormwater being, right, I don't, they're not bridges, but they're, they're, they're stormwater on both sides of the road. So, and we're looking, there's one on 102nd Street that we'll be putting out the bid, uh, that's south. No, uh, there's one farther. I think it's just south of Swartz Road. There's a pretty big, there's a pretty big box covered in there that's failing. And you got pretty deep ditches on it. That, that one's just about done with design and, and there, there could be, right? Anyway, that, that's how we got to where we're at. So, um, I mean, it, it's, it's the prerogative of the council, how you wanna move forward. But, but I will say, I mean, we can meet with them and they may or may not honor the price on a different place. I, I, I just don't know, haven't had that, that was not a discussion. Uh, it was, this is the bid. This is what we put it out to the bidders. You know, for our pricing standpoint, so we're, we would be changing scope. Again, now if we think we want to say, you know, Macinanty Construction, we've identified some additional road work. Would you honor these prices and do that? That certainly is an option that I, I would say is in play pretty easily, right? And, and we do it by change order. There, there, not being a state project, there's not really a limit on change orders. Kind of the general rule is you don't change order more than 25%. Kind of gets back to equity to the bidders, right? If I'd known you were gonna go do all this other work, I might have given you different pricing or whatever. So 25% is kind of the, some states have specifics, KDOT has specifics. I don't believe Kansas has a specific rule that says on bidding, if it's more than a 25% change, then you have to go back out to bid. That is, I'm gonna say the broad rule that's typically used. Would it be more than 20, you know, 25% would be, you know, about a hundred thousand dollars, give or, you know, give or less, somewhere in that range.
So, so Mike, with these quotes that came in, is there marks out on the road now, on the roadway that say from here to here needs to get, this is going to get cut out?
They, they received all of this. It was a bid. It was, it was a sealed.
So everything was marked out about this is good and this is not good.
Correct.
This needs the base rebuilt.
Correct. So anywhere that's not in the X, they will remove the asphalt.
Yeah.
They will then go six inches below that and do cement stabilized subbase.
Good, okay.
And then come back with a six-inch course and a two-inch course of asphalt. So it, it, it's exactly the same method. Actually, we're not gonna go quite as deep uh, as we did on 102nd Street, found that that really wasn't very beneficial. We were just, we were digging dirt to dig dirt, so to speak, and it didn't really, you know, help in that sense. So, uh, instead of 10 inches, we're going six inches on the subbase, cement stabilized subbase. They put mixed cement into the existing soils that's there to get the right compact.
I, I guess my point was just wanna make sure that contractor's not gonna cut out anything that was, is still good.
Correct.
Right? It's all set in stone pretty much about what we're cutting out, what we're doing and where we're doing it.
Right. So they have these, I won't say we went out and did quote survey like down to like a, a full set of plans where it says it's at 43 plus 12 plus 05, but I mean, we have some pretty, uh, clear marks there.
150 feet of.
Yeah. And, and that's exactly how we did 102nd Street, right?
Yeah.
Went out there, met with the contractor.
Yep.
Cut here, go to there, stop.
Makes sense.
We, you know, mark, mark pavement basically with the contractor and we'll do the same thing. You know, I, I, I guess the recommendation before you from staff is to, you know, we receive bids based upon the bids that we issued. These are the, the bidders, the low bidders, Macinanty Construction. Again, if we want to look at adding to this or making, you know, do additional work, certainly we, we can be happy to do that. If, if you wanna delay action on this by two weeks, then that, again, that's, that's, that's your directive. If we wanna change the scope of the work, we would need to ask that low bidder whether they would change scope of work.
What if they wanted, if we wanted to take out from 102nd to 98?
From 102nd to 98, if we wanted to reduce it?
Yeah.
I, I think as long as the reduction's not, again, I mean, it's a unit price bid, right? So it's not a guaran, it's not a guaranteed units now. You know, you're not gonna, if you take out 90% of it, then they're not gonna, you know, they're gonna say, then we just won't do the bid, right? But I mean, if we wanna adjust some of these areas, if that's, if that's the key, uh, then, then that discussion we certainly can have. Again, it'll be a change order, come back. Right? We'll, we'll say, here's the, here's your contract, right? Here's your base contract. We want to reduce or add work. That will create a change order that has to get approved by the party, by both parties. But the pricing will be, if I've got 500 square yards, because this is a square yard basis, so if you, right, it's based on the surface. It's not cubic yards, it's not tiny, it's just square yards. So each square yard has a, has a price to it. This many square yards, this is the cost. If you cut that many square yards out, that's the deduction.
So if we reduced it from 7200 square yards to 5,000 square yards, they would just reduce the price accordingly?
Correct. Absolutely.
And that doesn't have to go back out for bid?
Not as long as that. Again, I'm gonna use that 25% rule. Right? Because we, we, I broke out that North K32, 102nd, right? That's not a horrible section, right? I mean, it, it, I mean, it does get a lot of traffic because it's right off K32, and that's one of the things we look at. You, you know, if you look at that, that's roughly 10%, right? And, and I talked to them and said, hey, we may wanna cut that back uh, at this point. And if we do, uh, because I was still trying to understand some of our bonding allocations to make, you know, again, we said during the budget, we were gonna spend about $600,000 on road improvements this year. Right? And so this is in keeping with that. But if we need to adjust it, that it's unit-based. You know, even though we've estimated at 8,039 units, if it comes in at 8,200 square yards, we pay on 8,200 square yards. If it comes in at 7,800 square yards, then we pay on 7,800 square. So it's not, it's not a guaranteed price, it's a unit-based price. 20 feet wide by however many feet we go, we'll measure that in the field as they go along and they put a pay app together, right? We go out there with the wheel, you know, sometimes it's good, you know, I mean, you're not gonna get down to the inches, but you know, you're gonna wheel out, hey, it was this many feet. We measured four or five places, it's 20 feet at every one of those places. We assume all of it's 20 feet. Sometimes there's tie into driveways and stuff. It just kind of gets included in the square yardage that way.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat?
Yeah.
Driver?
Yes. Item six to your presentation regarding the development of 2023 annual budget focusing on preliminary financial projections for 2022.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is kind of the first official budget development presentation of the year, looking ahead to our uh, 2023 budget. I mean, obviously we do our quarterly budget reviews and we just did our most recent one last council meeting. So a lot of this is going to be building off of that. We're not gonna dive too much into the detail on some of these major general fund revenue items. Because we already did that two weeks ago. Uh, we do have some updated information on some of those revenue sources and we'll, we'll touch a little bit on that. Um, again, this is primarily looking at the general fund budget for fiscal year 2023. Really a table setter for the continued budget discussions we're gonna have for the rest of the year. This will be our kind of financial projections session early, early on the year. We got about three, four, or four to five months of data, depending on the, the metric. Um, so obviously we're trying to extrapolate that towards the end of this year, which will let us know uh, and inform us on what our estimated fund balance is going to be at the end of this year, which obviously is going to inform how we wanna spend that fund balance in 2023. Critical success factors, we go over this every time we have a, a budget meeting, just to remind those keeping along at home in the group up here, um, what the council had previously identified as areas that we wanted to focus on. Uh, not just in budget, but just in general community development. Um, really, if I were to focus on any of these tonight, it's kind of the, kind of the guiding lights for us, it would be that funding more fully developed, realistic, stable and diversified multi-year financial program, as well as that long-term planning. Obviously, we're trying to forecast. When we adopt the budget in August or September in that time range, we are essentially making a budget for the next 16 months. So it's, it's, you know, that's not long-term in the sense it's not, you know, five to 10 years out, but we're still making a lot of assumptions and estimates based on the most available data and metrics that we have, you know, over a year out as to the performances and some of these different line items. So with that in mind, we're gonna touch on the general fund revenue. So what you see in this table, in the second column, that's the original estimate for these, um, general fund revenue sources. So these are what we adopted in the fall of last year as far as what we thought we would make in these revenue items throughout the year in fiscal year 2023. These are the areas that we touch on in our quarterly budget reports because they're the major, they're over a hundred thousand dollars in revenue to the general fund. So again, this is the general fund, primarily fund city operations, doesn't it include the sewer fund, the, um, solid waste fund, debt, anything like that. We're primarily focusing on general fund uh, as that's backed by property taxes and funds general city operations. What we've got in the third column is our revised estimate based on the most available data that we've got to this point. Um, as you can see, and some of the, you know, variations from the second to the third column, we touched on in our last meeting, looking at some of their budget performance in the first quarter. Um, so I'm not gonna get into every single one of these. I will dive a little bit into sales tax, as you can see, a pretty large increase in our sales tax projections, at least at this point. Again, we're not locking in any of this. We're just kind of giving you a snapshot as we start this budget development cycle. Um, franchise fees, I mean, a slight reduction there. Uh, court fines, you'll see a pretty significant increase. Now, I'm not, this, this is based on the most available metric. So we will, I'm, I'm going to be paring that down even before we get through this presentation and very likely before we get to the actual, um, budget presentation. Oh, excuse me, budget adoption in, in August and September. And then EMS revenue, we touched a little bit on that last time. I, I paired that estimate down to 165 uh, for a couple of different reasons. One, we had that kind of lower than anticipated, uh, March revenue, which, and when looking at it, it's not really attributable to any, you know, procedural or, or market variable. It's just kind of one of those things where revenue was down for that month. So we're keeping an eye on it. It bounced back up, but that 160 to 170 range is kind of where the budget or that line item has, has leveled off at the last two to three years. So for now, that's kind of the level I'm gonna assume it's gonna end the year at. So now we're talking about sales taxes. And so this, this is, you know, a lot of numbers up here on this graph, but essentially, what you wanna pay attention to is that average line at the very bottom and in bold. So what this shows in each of those columns is the performance of these individual sales tax items. So Edwardsville Sales, Edwardsville Use, Wyandotte County Sales and Wyandotte County Use, their performance from January to April as a percentage of their audited year-end final. So on average, Edwardsville Sales Taxes at the end of April are at 40% of what they end up being at the end of the year. Edwardville Use is at 37, Wyandotte County Sales 40, and Wyandotte County Use 37. So there's the, the percentage in all those years, and there's the average at the end of them. As you can see, they're, they're pretty well clustered. There's not a lot of variation in there, um, which is good. Stability is, it makes forecasting a little bit easier on our end. So what we do is we take that average and we apply it to the current year, the, the current revenue that we've seen this year. So when we take where we're at in Edwardville Sales Taxes from January to April of this year, which is about 193,000, if that was 40% of our final, then our final's gonna end up being around 481,000. So with all of those different areas, we're seeing an increase in what our estimates, a increase from our original estimates in budget development last fall, which is good. The most significant one from a percentage standpoint is Edwardville Use. The most significant one from a dollar standpoint is Wyandotte County Sales. And both of those, as you can see, that clustering is, is, there's, you know, it's, it's, it's very tight. It's not like the very, uh, the averages are pulling from a, a big range of numbers. So we can be kind of comfortable in those assumptions as to how they're going to be used. So obviously, we're gonna monitor this. You guys are gonna be kept up to, up to date uh, as we continue to do our budget reviews for this current year and looking forward. But right now, from a sales tax perspective, we're doing fairly well. So to touch on the court fines, applying that same kind of metric where we're typically at it this year versus audited, typically we're at 33%. Um, if we were at 33% now, then that would end up at 570,000, which would be, you know, historic numbers for that line item to be performing at. We will be paring that down, but this is just to give you a little bit more information on how those numbers are coming to. So overall, and not getting too into the, into the weeds on some of these, because again, we touch on these pretty frequently throughout, throughout the year. Where we originally estimated our revenues being for fiscal year 2022 was about 6.5 million dollars. The way that the trends are indicating right now, and I put a star in that fines and fees because I did reduce that court fine estimate from 570 to about 480, $480,000. So that's incorporated in this. It's not assuming 5. So that's incorporated in this. It's not assuming $570,000 in court fees. It goes up to about 6.8 million. So a swing to the positive at about $300,000. Obviously, still early in the year. These are going to get tweaked. But we're at this point, and as we get, you know, five, six months worth of data, we're really working in the margins unless there's some really drastic, unexpected changes to some of the market conditions out there. So we're on a good footing four to five months into the year as far as revenue goes. Touching on general fund expenditures, so what this, this graph shows is our January to April expenditures from fiscal year 17 to 21 versus their audited final and what percentage that is in the, as it relates to their audited final spending levels. The average of that is 33%. Right now, our current spending levels, as it relates to our budgeted fiscal year 2022 performance, is right on that money. So that's a testament to the departments keeping everything kind of in line and on track for with how we budgeted. It's in line with past performance. That number will probably, that percentage, once we get to the audited figure, is probably going to be, go down a little bit. The reason being is expenditures tend to exceed budget by an average of 2%. So if you go back the last five years, sometimes we're over 4%, sometimes we're under 1%, sometimes we're right on the money. It's all within that 4% kind of swing. And again, we're trying to extrapolate and estimate on figures, year-end figures, 16 months in advance. So being within an average of 2% in those spending level items, considering all the, especially the last five years where there's been a lot of variability to the market and unexpected factors that have been difficult to work into our equations, staying within a 2% average in expenditure levels, again, a testament to our department, keeping things on the, on track and, and really sticking to budget as kind of their guiding principles throughout the year. So if we assume a 3% overage in our expenditure levels, gas is up, materials are up, cost of everything is pretty much gone up. So if we assume 1% over where we typically end up in exceeding, you know, budgeted expenditures, we'd exceed our expenditure level by six, by almost $200,000, so going from about 6.5 to 6.7. So in taking those estimates, our year-end fund balance is at the top, 876,000. Our adjusted revenue estimate is at 6.8, and then assuming a 3% overage in expenditures at 6.7, our estimated year-end fund balance as it stands right now is about 978,127, just shy of a million, which is right at 15% of expenditures. It's on the actual, it's, it's within our adopted financial policy. It's on the low end of that. Our policy is 15 to 18%. That $876,000 number, as, as far as a percentage of expenditures, is less than that, which is, it's, 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 I don't want to say it's problematic, but it's not to our policy. And it's always good to budget within the financial policy that the body has put forth. That's the kind of thing that bond ratings look after whenever we're going out for debt for projects is, are they budgeting within the policy that they said that they would? And so it's always good to stay within that, it's good to stay within that 15 to 18% anyway, because it's just financially sound budgeting practice. But as it relates to internal practices, sticking with the policy also has its own value. All that said, if some of these trends and estimates bear out through the end of the year, we would see an increase in the fund balance of about $100,000. So that is all good. As far as, you know, fiscal year 2022 goes, that is, if you recall, at the time of budget adoption in, in the fall of 2021, there were some items that fell off because we wanted to get a budget document that was balanced from expenditures to revenues. So we can't give that money back. If these trends bear out, it presents opportunities for us to focus on projects and improvements within this calendar year and still be, add to the fund balance and, and be able to present some projects that, you know, provide some real tangible benefits to the residents and the city as a, as an entity. So things like improvements to the community center, things like improvements to the park, equipment purchases, this and that, which kind of leads into our fiscal year 2022 and 2023 budget priorities, which you're going to be familiar with because these are, these line up with the conversations that we all had during the recent council workshop. So staffing, pretty much all the departments have demonstrated at least some need for additional staffing. We've taken steps to address those. So obviously, we're keeping an eye on that. And if there's a recommendation to that effect for fiscal year 2023, you guys will be plugged into that as part of the budget process. Compensation, we all recognize the need to keep current with the city's step and grade plan with respect to inflation, increased cost of living, other communities, you know, we've been, there's a pretty active city manager listserv for the area. Other communities are doing some mid-year budget adjustments. Others are, you know, kind of punting it to 2023. I don't think at this point, we're, we're recommending any deviation from the pay plan as we presented it. But sticking with the pay plan as it's been presented is important, both to take care of our people and to be, remain competitive within the larger metro. Facilities, public safety still in, in housed in portable, you know, quote unquote, temporary commercial buildings. I mentioned the community center. I mentioned the cemetery and parks. There are improvements that can be made out there this year. And Public Works obviously lacks adequate facilities to store some of their equipment. So, you know, some of these are not going to be 2022 priorities. Some of them could be, depending on how budget performance continues to go throughout the year. But, and with facilities and equipment as well, where EPD and administration are going to have some software needs that need to be addressed, record management systems, our financial systems broadly need some upgrades, same thing with court. You know, these are the things that we need to start looking at, being proactive, essentially taking the direction from the council workshop in, you know, not letting these things stray too far out to where they eventually become like crisis-level projects that we need to address immediately. So staying on top of them and orienting our decision-making around these kind of budget priorities was the direction from the upper-level administration that they received from, you know, the dialogue that happened at that council workshop. So going forward, the next meeting, we should have some information from the county about the mill levy and the updated assessed valuations, as well as the revenue neutral rate. So there'll be some discussion about that and how exactly we want to work with that moving forward. July 11th, we'll focus pretty much wholly on general fund expenditures for next year. So what the depart, we'll be having conversations between the administration and, and our department heads about expenditure levels in their individual departments for fiscal year 2023. August 8th is when we'll have our six-month mid-year fiscal year 22 budget report. So we'll have a good, solid six months' worth of data, which obviously makes, you know, we're, we're then extrapolating only half the year versus three quarters of the year. Again, unless things start to behave in ways that we're not anticipating, I think we've got a good track on, on some of these metrics going forward. August 22nd, goal is right now to set a maximum for the fiscal year 2023 and to set the budget hearing at that time. And if there's, depending on how the R and R shakes out and the discussions around that, we might have some additional discussion around there for final budget adoption, not that September 12, 2022 meeting. That's kind of the roadmap for the rest of the summer and into the fall for budget development. Again, going to go back to this page right here. So this is kind of, again, the table setter. Here's how we think 2022 is going to play out with the metrics that we have now. Hopefully, ending the year at a fund balance of about a million. And then, you know, essentially just keeping things on, on budget and projects moving forward in relation to that budget, but also being cognizant that if there are opportunities to make some of these improvements now with, if there are some revenue, if, if sales taxes, for example, are performing at a level that, that higher than what we had anticipated, then now is the opportunity to do some of these other, you know, not major, you know, we're not going to build a new city hall this year. We're not going to build a new public, public safety facility this year. But there are some projects that we can start knocking off the ticker if, if some of these revenue trends continue to bear out. So with that, if you've got any questions, we'll kind of get more into the nitty-gritty about 2023 as we go on throughout the summer. But that's, again, how we, at this point, are anticipating 2022 shaking out.
I think I've asked this before, but is there any way we can have a report of where the sales taxes are coming from? You know, like what businesses, you know, is their business up? Like if you compare business aid last year to business aid this year?
I, I started doing that in the, during the pandemic. It was really just kind of a, just to see how, actually, I take it back. It was around that 2018, 2019 budget year where we were seeing kind of in the third quarter decreases statewide and some of that. And so what the state does is they provide information, or we could, we have to request it, but they can provide it. Each type of business has a certain code designated by the state. So convenience stores have a certain code, auto sales have a certain code. So we get that information and can kind of categorize what's overperforming, what's underperforming based on that code. I, when we were looking at it, I was looking at it from a city sales tax perspective. I'm not sure what we would get from the, because the county sales taxes are kind of the largest chunk of that. So I'm not sure what I would be able to get from a county sales tax. But then obviously, it's a lot more data input into it. It's available. It takes some time to put together and then report on accurately, but that information's out there, yes.
I was just thinking of here locally, it's kind of curious as to how the businesses are doing, you know? And what businesses are, like, I know the time that we didn't have the car dealership, that probably dinged us pretty good. Because we're, it's a high-ticket item. And so this being from a curiosity standpoint, it'd be interesting to see how our businesses are doing year over year.
And we have, there's a limit which can be reduced publicly, but obviously. But we've done a little bit of that as a car dealership, one where we got looked at, it was there, but there, there. And wherever we look at, but we certainly can, and again, face, but probably SIC. Versus, okay, well, how much did McDonald's do, Wendy's do, you know, whatever like that. But I think we did some, obviously, SIC-based code, maybe the Wyandotte E C.
I, I just think it'd be beneficial because it would, for future planning. You know, let's say, for instance, fast food had a much higher percentage of revenues than some other business. And we could say, well, you know, it'd really be nice to have more of that in our city and really focus on that.
And that plays into the, the council priorities of long-term funding. And that's kind of strategic look at it is how we target some developments based on the performances actually in town.
At least for me, I don't have a best, but that would be beneficial for me.
I, I think, I, I do want to, like, Zach. Not just once a year, but really all year. Down in the number. I think probably, you know, the message here that I would focus on is, again, overall financial, for your state. I put this up against public, about eight years round, as we're looking at it over the long term, right? We always keep our eye on that unbalance that we should. And again, the last few years, very recent, yes, we dropped it down. I'm not, you know, I don't like that. But what did we have? What we have, right? And what were we able to do? We were able to make sure all our employees got paid, right? And continued service, get all those things, which is what the public expects. They, there may be a pain of living when they call for the fire truck, the police, the roads got a hole in it. Then we're here, oh, sorry. And we were able to do that, and that has some impacts. Now, you know, this is kind of, you know, we're certainly in an odd economic time. But we keep our eye on that, that goal there, and keep that funding in place. Council staff have a great job of that. So I, I think really considering where the economy and everything is back, really solid shape. And we're still able, even earlier this night, we're still able, able to go out and invest in a real path. Anybody's personally happened, start cutting staff things and capital. Overall, it's easy, they often come back, like you. I really do think Zach is trying to get his, our staff, the ones that they do each day. They always, leaders, hopefully, you know, those priorities to talk about in that workshop really helps us, like, okay.
Thank you, Zach, very much. Item number seven, consider reassessing into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B6 for preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property. 7:25, ma'am.
So moved with the returning at 7:45.
Move the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
That was Malat with the second, correct? Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat? Schreiber?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
How was your turn?
I know. Oh, I know. Well.
That was my last station.
Okay, Garrett, motion. And Chuck's second. We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Scott?
Sure. Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Malat? Schreiber?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, on to city manager report. Mike, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I would add a couple of quick things here. First and foremost, in the overall, I think, very much. And I definitely want to extend my thanks to Zach, especially like the last four or five days of that. But, you know, things ran where it was close to, and I think that's right, most part. Nice to know you've got a, you know, you've got a person here to take care of that. Just briefly, a couple of things, kind of covering the whole work stuff. But 43, I did meet with contractors here today. Still on a schedule for the gym. They're, they're now able to work in the railroad right away. Working right away. Pay forms and concrete the next few days. Hot weather is as bad as cold weather, but, so they, they're going to be up there working on that. He still believes that by the end of next week, that is, that will be open that one. We'll be closing night street. So they're, they're moving forward. They're back, back on, working right away. But I, so, make a lot of, I do want to. Under Public Works, I'm still working for, working for Public Works Director. And I do know, and I know something reported out, you know, some sewer backed up. And, and this is where that sewer inventory is sold. Working on that, because then it allows us to start getting out there, being proactive. We really haven't been proactive with it. The way it was set up, whole system wasn't set up to be proactive, right? Now we can go in and say, we need to focus on there to see what we have to work with. Van holes, you know, smoke testing there and that line, that improved. Thirty to forty-five days, we'll have that all wrapped up. Still here, Bradley, having somebody that's GIS, that's the absolute, nothing we ever have. They pull up and say, okay, here's this manhole, here's the picture, here's all this stuff. Really, really valuable, data, person that belongs to that stuff. He creates these maps.
He creates these map fours and stuff, so that improved, we really value, we don't want sewer over closed, so, that's my thing.
Zach, did you have anything for us? Ms. Dehaan? Captain Short?
Um, this Friday, we're in our fourteenth annual department meeting and breakfast. We do together, mostly June, haven't listened to July before, but every year we do together to celebrate successes and hold some department business, but you know, it's just a nice early morning breakfast, we hold over a little bit for midnight guys, and we get in, get out. Highlight, we kind of wanted to discuss some of the things that we accomplished over the past year, with you guys' help and support. Note would be compensation plan, whatever is happy with, the additions, you could obviously explain the company's too higher than we had, it's going to help our patrol spread immensely. We're going to talk about more about the full schedule, one of the things among facilities and paying benefits was, of course, time off, and how do we do that with the limited personnel we have, so we've got to be creative, and we're doing whatever we can to meet the needs on and off duty for our, for officers. We've been very happy with the two investigators that we were able to hire, as we previously highlighted, along with Brad Todd, and the two investigators who have done a lot of very good things, some, some strong relationships with DA's office. And lastly, we just want to talk about buzz and excitement really is, because we're going to talk about the municipal facilities, first we'll report back to our folks, the meeting that we, I attended, and that's what it, some months ago, March, so there's a lot of excitement about that. And maybe, lastly, dollars you guys, a lot to spend with the visual, video recording systems and ad projects, what those are underway right now, and we just have those in place, fully functionally, like Paul. So that wasn't too much all at once, but that's kind of what we're going to try to tap on Friday, and really just kind of talk about where we were, where we are now, where we're going to go, we're excited about it.
Thank you. Chief Wyden?
We have a splash pad, that's on the front, five, seven o'clock, Friday afternoon, three, four, after Fourth Street, all that, and you can, you can start by, if you want to die, it's extremely stupid hot, like it has gotten so far, so that will be out, but that does not affect our capabilities to respond. I'm not going to say we don't have to, we don't run out there and splash mud like kids do, but we're paying Paul, it's been, so that would be Friday afternoon. The summer camp, we worked on, how the, we had eight or eleven year olds filled up, twenty-four hours, starting with those stand by lists on the eight, eight or eleven year olds, our twelve, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, not have as much response to it, although we'll be a full class, that's what we are going to do, too, weeks for the eight or eleven year olds, because we're, we're stand by list, right?
Fantastic, thank you. Councilman Adams?
Regarding the police department, I, I chuckle when you hear on the news that the KC Mo Department is, is finally getting body cams, and I think about ten or twelve years ago when we got ours. And I, I, you know, we've, we have a department that thinks ahead and protects its, its employees and protects its citizens, and I really appreciate that we are far ahead of the curve on a lot of things, and we may be small, but we're mighty and, and forward-thinking, so I really appreciate your department's progression in, in that. I really do appreciate Commissioner Stites coming, it's a refreshing change to have active leadership for, for our area, and that's listening to our needs and wants, and, and that's communicating so well, and, and he is, he's everything I thought he would be at that position, so I'm just really excited on, on our benefits as a city we'll get from his involvement on the commission, so. And then, once again, I really appreciate the departments watching their budget so closely, in, in, in any town of any size, it can get out of hand really fast, and so I do appreciate the longstanding attention to all the details of the budget and, and keeping things within line, so thank you very much to all the departments for that.
Councilman Malat?
You took the side to it away from me, but I did appreciate having what seems like pretty good advocates on the county level, he's going to be fighting enough old battle because he's outnumbered, I think he's the kind of guy that would probably have put up with that, do some convincing in our favor, I do appreciate the VKs having him. I wanted to thank particularly Fire Department, Police Department for the Memorial Day service at the cemetery, it was pretty good, I really did appreciate your, your efforts that you guys did on that, doesn't go unnoticed by anybody. I do have, I know I made a motion to spend the money on Swarth Road, and I do that because I think in the past, we had the Pacer ratings done, and that was one of them that indicated that, and I think that if we stay in those kind of guidelines, and the recommendations of our former Public Works Director, I think that was probably the proper way, the right way to do that. Not neglecting Kansas Avenue, I think Kansas Avenue should be a priority in this year's budget for whatever kind of improvement it should be taking, because I do drive that, I do know what the condition has, but I understand that in the past, if you kind of repair things as you go along, it saves you in the future, and I think that Kansas Avenue really needs a lot more planning, you're just throwing some money for that, I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying, that's just the way I think. I was going to make a men, oh, I was going to ask about hire, I don't know, I think it's already been, we've got to do hire, your desk in there, you'll see, I'll take, take a little pressure off of that.
Wednesday. I thought tomorrow was Wednesday.
I take a little, take a little pressure off of that, because I know he wants to take one of those tasks or something. And the other thing I wanted to comment, and I'm sure that it was with the mayor's blessing, we have the annual Chamber of Commerce luncheon a week ago, and the mayor could not attend, but Councilman Stye Adams made the State of the City address, and I thought he did a remarkable job, he kind of had to follow a PowerPoint if the mayor wanted, but that's okay, he did, he did a really good job.
Thank you.
I did get a lot of comments, but, yeah, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good deal, and that's all I have.
Councilman Shriver?
So I will try to repeat everything everybody said. I do, as noted in the city managers' reports, I would like to thank the Edwardsville Police and Fire Departments for helping, participating, setting up and being part of the Memorial Day services at the cemetery, because it is a beautiful, honored ceremony, and I know you do a lot, a lot more than people probably think. Commissioner Stites, like to thank him as well for coming, giving his update, giving his projects he's working on, giving his projects he's going to work on, I might reach out to him, I don't know if he's. For us, we are BPU customers, but we don't vote for any BPU, and I, I don't know, I don't know if anybody's ever explained it to me, if it's ever been pursued, why is it that way? And I'm glad he's looking at that pilot, so glad. I think I do know some history, but it, there it sits, we're customers, so that's it. I like the police department does that, why am I just hearing, maybe you've said it before, that you have this June meeting, get together, I think that's really, really amazing, granted, probably next to impossible to get everybody together with the shifts and whatnot, but I think that's amazing, and celebrate each other, commemorate each other, it's, that's a, I like that, a lot of camaraderie there, because there's, there's some turnover, you know, there's turnover that happens in whatever the case may be, so I like that.
Great deal, even from space, people are putting fun, draft.
Well, it's easy to do, it's easy to do in a structure like that. They don't have to be together, a lot of them don't ever have to be together.
And so I, I know it's something, I can, I have to speak, that's really important aspect, so it's really started, we're going to do, it's kind of like our community, why we have our community, you know, when we do.
Right.
So when I think, it was like, we didn't, we all get together, we're talking about being, but, I mean, I, I think, private, or, 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 I think, etc., I think we're better, you know, worse, worse, that, and I think it's something that she believes is always worth a lot of value, it's just like when they do some of their qualification pursuit.
Absolutely. No, I really like that.
I know the values, I, I, I know, but I mean, that's something, I know the values,
Sure.
figure out how we do that, and finally, you know, it costs money, but that's not a, people stay over, right, people get them early, so they got to figure out, you know, the streets, what will come out, so, I think the fire department is.
Right, right. I will add my two cents, too, as far as the discussion on the proving the roads and the repairs, I do agree that I think we are following the Pacer scale, the Pacer rating, whatever the case may be, but if there could be something done to Schwartz, or Kansas Avenue, if it's that bad, I am, and I understand, you can't go in and put a Band-Aid, I, I get that, but if there could be a little something, because it sounds like to go and do the work there, the lines and the right of ways and all that takes time, too, but if there could be something done, I haven't driven it, but I'm going to, I'm going to.
I know that we spoke, we've been discussing, I mean, it is low on pace.
Oh.
I think it's the only two we have left, and probably, speaker road up north, it's all, it's all, so there's, there are no doubts that those two roads on Pacer rated are low.
Zach, thank you for getting those branches cut back off one hundred and tenth, back of Williamson Farms, a couple of the neighbors so appreciated that, a lot of people walked that sidewalk and branches were growing low, so. And Zach, thank you again for the budget presentation, everything you do for that, because it's daily, probably, input on your end of the desk, so, so much appreciate that. That's all I have.
Councilman Scott?
Well, I guess one of the benefits of being close toward the ends of our comments up here, I won't re, re, re-say what everybody's already said, but I do really want to applaud our police chief and fire chief for everything that they do in our community and for the kids, and, and for their, for each other, I think that's really good, and we can't say enough, just that teamwork and being part of something special is a really good feel-good, and, and we need that right now as a, as a department and as a group. I want to give a big shout out to Zach, and we, we just, I want our citizens in our city to know, you know, what Zach does, and I don't know how he gets done everything that he does every day, because he just, he just seems like he's, you know, getting it all the time and getting things done, and getting, getting reports ready for us and, and for, for you, Mike, but Zach was instrumental when we had this sewer line break, and it was on my street in our subdivision of Williamson Farms, and I got ahold of Zach, and it was eight o'clock at night, and Zach was there within thirty minutes, and then within an hour, you know, Ready Services was there, and then James, you know, from Public Works, so, you know, between Zach and, and James being there all night with Ready Services, working on that sewer line, they were able to get it unstuck, I think by what, five thirty AM, something along that line, and it, it allowed the sewage to come back out of that basement of my neighbor's house, you know, and so I just, it felt really good, I felt really proud of our city and for Zach, for, and James to be on call and, and to take care of something like that. One thing I want to comment is our, and it's no fault to our police department, but some of the guys that responded, you know, they were told that sewer line was BPU's, and so there was a little bit of disconnect, and I think, just like what you were saying about our sewer line, when all that gets done, I think it'll really add light to all of us and plus our, you know, Fire Department, Police Department, about what is ours and what's not ours, and I, and I think that will definitely help our citizens if this should happen again, because I think online, it says if there's a sewer line plug, blockage, they're directed to call nine one one, and that's what my neighbors did, and when they were, and so it took a little bit of time, I think it's like an hour before I got involved, before I got the phone call, and then got ahold of Garrett, who got me hold of Zach, to get, kind of get everything worked through, but again, just, I, I think once we get that information for the sewer line and the maps and, and, and location of everything, I think that'll be beneficial for everybody involved, that the officer responded right away and, and tried to help, and he, he told me, he said, well, I was told it was a BPU problem, so, you know, so anyway, it, just thank you, Zach and staff, for helping us out and helping my neighbor out, and I know Zach, you know, has stayed in contact with the Van Winkles for some time, as, as that whole, that whole thing progressed, so I really appreciate that communication, that was nice, and I, and I don't want to continue to harp on Zach about how awesome he is, I think we all know that, but Zach was instrumental, we worked back and forth, this is Zach day, isn't it? Mark this down, this day, Zach was instrumental working with the, the two contractors, with the contractors on Fourth Street, about getting that, at least that road opened up to the railroad crossing, so that, so public could get into the bank and get into the, the post office, and then also into that new restaurant, so I really appreciate Zach staying on top of that and getting in the middle of that, and I know he didn't want to bother you, being he was, you know, on vacation, but just.
We, we actually both did it up up there one day, same time, I was on vacation, I will say this, I've built a good job of disconnecting, so it's like, I, I, exactly, but I tried to, I tried, you know, I, I read emails, but I just get rid of all the ones I knew I didn't need to deal with, because I knew I had to team back there and get, like, yeah.
Well, you, you definitely have good hands here, and you got to have a good team, Mike, and, and whatever we can do to continue that team and grow that team, and I know you've got new people coming in, and hopefully we can get a new, you know, director and city works or Public Works Department, that'll be beneficial, get some of that pressure off of James and, and our new guy, I've seen him out working hard on Fourth Street, trying to clear that mud off the sidewalk, and that's a, I know that's a challenge in itself, but I think that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So I'll try to be quick as, as possible, last Friday night was our first movie night for the year, and wanted to thank Mike Martin and Zach for that, that was a great, well-attended event, I think a lot of people were excited about it, and we have a few more coming up, and so I feel like those are great, great summer events for folks in our community to come and just have something to do and something to look forward to. Uh, one concern, Mike, I just wanted to bring up again, just to, I know we had talked about it, it may have been a year ago, but when these engineering costs are coming in regularly substantially higher than the bids are coming in, I know usually it's, it's really impressive and sounds great, but also it's a little concerning when the engineering costs are almost a hundred thousand off, and maybe we need to shore up some of those estimates a little bit. Let's see, I, I had a meeting with Mayor Harrington and Mayor Garner this morning, and just bringing, can. like Margaret mentioned earlier, we're not voting on that board, and so we shouldn't have a tax applied to our city, and then funding revenue for Kansas City, Kansas. See if there's anything else. The election office, Commissioner Stites brought up, that was something that a few of us I know have called into the election commissioner and asked for an advanced voting site here in Edwardsville. The election commissioner, he, he called me pretty quickly to explain how excited he was for a new election site out west in Piper, and so I reminded him again, yet another wind-up county service that our citizens are driving to Kansas City, Kansas to use, and how hard is it to get something here in Edwardsville for our county dollars, to, to show our citizens that something is coming back from the county? And so just wanted to give a quick update on that, hopefully I'll have some good news in the future, and saying, hey, this, conversations are going somewhere, and somebody's doing something, but, but right now, at least, reminding them in a consistent, on a consistent basis, that we're here and we want to be better represented, and I feel like Commissioner Stites coming here today is something that we hadn't seen for years, as long as, I mean, the last several years, anyone had come to give us an update on what they're doing for us in the county, and so that was encouraging to see. Lastly, probably thankfully to y'all, so we can go home tonight, is while we're talking about Swarts, I would just encourage everyone, since we have the opportunity to potentially save some money from that three hundred and forty-three thousand dollar budget, and shortening that up where we can use it other places in the city potentially, go ahead and drive over the next couple of weeks, and see if there's any sections that we might be able to shore up, shorten up, remembering we're not expanding it, we're not widening it, we're just doing full-depth repair, because if we can shorten up that budget a little bit, just like in our budgets at home, we'll be able to use that money somewhere else in our city, not saying we won't, you know, obviously we're going to do it, but maybe just, just take some time and drive it. That's all I've got for tonight, thank you.